Okay, sorry about that. I call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone in the room, welcome everyone at home. This is the Bangor School Committee Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 1st. And please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and we apologize for the delay. Without further ado, we have a recognition of the debate state, the debate team state champions. Superintendent Tager?
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the Bangor School Committee, I would like to congratulate the Bangor High School Speech and Debate Teams on their first place finish at the state meet held on January 22nd, 2023. I'm proud of the versatility, ingenuity, intelligence, and cohesiveness that the Bangor School Speech and Debate Team demonstrates. Programs such as this are made possible by dedicated coaches and a school administrative team that values co- and extracurricular participation for all students. I'd like to ask Mr. Matthew Leland to come to the podium and say a few words and introduce the team members. Thank you Matt, and congratulations.
So, thank you very much. The team has worked hard this year and in the last year. I had big shoes to fill taking over for Coach Pelletier, who coached the Bangor team for, I'm pretty sure, well over 20 years. And in the post-COVID season, we had a regrowing year. So, this year, our team is mostly quite young, with only a few seniors who'll be graduating, and only a few juniors, where a lot of our students are coming in as sophomores and freshmen. So, the team has a long way to go from here as well. So, I'll start by introducing the three team captains that we have here who are also competing. All right. So, I would like to first recognize the hard work that was put in by our three team captains. Emily Rutherford, the captain for our Congress team, who has helped to rebuild the Congress team from, almost from scratch, as there were only two members of Congress at the beginning of the year, and now, we have about six members of Congress who, with some significant enthusiasm, who will take over from there in the following years. We have also our captains, Lizzy Shum and Caitlin Keller, who have taken over as captains, even though they're only sophomores, just due to the large number of seniors that graduated last year. And with, with their support, we've managed to build our numbers and build the talent of the new debaters in our team for, for this particular season, and for hopefully the coming years as well. So, there are two certificates here for myself and Coach Hendricks for the speech team. But not, not present here today, we have Maddie Carroll, who's placed fifth in novice poetry at her first tournament ever, and that being the state championship. And also Joey Rutledge, who was, who was essentially judged to be the fourth funniest high school student in Maine, also on his very first attempt. And our first certificate for people who are here, we have Emily Rutherford. Please come forward. Next, we have Braden Sloan, who placed fifth in junior varsity. Also, not, not present today, we have Beatrice Foster, who placed third in junior varsity. And we have Giuliana Venturelli, a freshman who placed third in varsity. Caitlin Keller, who placed second in varsity. You're welcome. And Elizabeth Shum, who placed first in varsity, being the Lincoln Douglas State Champion for the state of Maine. As well as our other competitors who are also not here today, Darcy Lees in Congress, and Madison Rockwell, also in debate. Congratulations to all of you. You've earned your state championship, and thank you very much.
Congratulations once again. On to adjustments to the agenda. Are there any Superintendent Tager?
Yes, I have one adjustment to the agenda, E1C1A, which is Personnel/Teacher nomination.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? No? All in favor?
Passes 6-0. Thank you.
Okay, next to public comments. And just a quick reminder, members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school, the school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence, and do we have any public comments tonight? Please come on up. Welcome.
Hey. Hi there. I'm Dave Armstead. My wife Susan Bennett Armstead is with me. And we are, five of our six children either are or have been students in the Bangor School Department, and we are residents over here on Broadway. So, we're, we're here to tell a really good story, if that's right. So, our youngest daughter Annabelle is eight years old, and we adopted her after, after being her foster parent for a year. Like any kids coming through the foster system, she has some issues, and one of the issues that she had is she's completely non-verbal. So, we never know really what she's thinking. Scary sometimes as a parent, and we never know if she's afraid, or, we know sometimes if she's happy, because she has a great smile. She's now in second grade, and since the very first day of kindergarten, she has been deathly afraid of school buses. I mean, they're loud, you know, and they make noise, and, and they're kind of weird, and smelly, and no offense to bus drivers, but you know. So, and that started on the very first day of kindergarten, where she had a hard time. It was COVID, it had a hard time with all the processes, and she couldn't do it. She was so afraid she would run, if she got within 40 yards of a school bus, she would run away. And the, I'm going to get emotional, so sorry. But the, the teachers at 14th Street, and the administrators at 14th Street School have been working with her for two years, for three years now, really, two and a half. And, and we got, and they would get her close to a bus, they would take a few steps closer, they got her within a couple of doors. And then, when we came back from Christmas break, her teacher Tracy Reardon said, "I think we can do this." I think, you know, she did have one, because it was a concert at the high school, they tried as an experiment, "Let's ride with all your classmates over to the high school," and it went successfully. And so, then, they thought they would ride, they would try out her coming home on the bus. And so, I drove over to the school, and I was kind of spying on them from a distance with my phone to take pictures as a proud dad. But sure enough, they, they took her to the school, to the bus, and she got on, and it went great. And I know it's a really simple thing. As parents of kids with special needs, these are gigantic achievements, just to be normal, just to do what other kids are doing.
Okay.
She overcame so much just to ride the bus. Would not have happened without 14th Street School.
Yeah. So, you need to know that because she wasn't riding the bus, every morning I had to drive both her and her sister to school every day for three years, because of the timing of things. And what has happened now is she now drives to school on the bus and comes home on the bus, completely independently. And we wanted to just restate that the excellence that you all strive for, for Bangor School Department, doesn't always look like grades. Sometimes it looks like these huge achievements in these tiny moments, and we wanted to thank you for your support. And I really wanted to shout out for the Special Education Department that doesn't always get the recognition that they should get. We've been nothing but blessed by this school this year. Thank you.
She gets off the bus smiling and waving at the driver every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Must I compose myself? Couple teary eyes. Thank you. Love those kinds of stories. Okay. Next, superintendents' proposals and updates. First, we have action items. Actually, we don't have action items. We have a couple of informational items. We have the update on best buddies.
Yes, thank you Chair. Director of People's Services Kristi Babin will provide you with the best buddies update.
It's going to be hard to follow that story.
An amazing one. At the last meeting, Member Luciano asked us to provide you on an update on the best buddies program. In August, Mr. Tager and I met with Katie Bryden and Sarah Luciano to discuss the best buddies program. And for those of you who don't know what best buddies is, it's a global nonprofit dedicated to inclusion for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The goal of the program is to empower people with disabilities by helping them form meaningful friendships with their peers, secure successful jobs, live independently, and feel valued in their society. In our conversation in August, we determined that the Bangor School Department does many of these things already, but why not make it formal and include the best buddies organization? So, we decided to target Bangor High School, Down East Elementary School, and Vine Street Elementary School. At Bangor High School, I'm proud to announce that the Student Council approved a best buddies club, and they had their first meeting this, this afternoon. Both of those students would like to come in the spring and give you an update on how that has gone over the course of the next semester. So, that's good. We also had three mentor students in our Project Transition Program that signed up to be best buddies formally. So, trying to get that off the ground and running at the high school, and that, that's the school that has really formalized it the most at this point in time. Down East Elementary School, Sarah Vickers, has worked with her 21st Century Coordinator, and they plan to do a best buddies after-school program beginning this semester. And at the Vine Street Elementary School, Lynn Silk has met with Katie, and they're looking forward to the spring and starting something in there, I believe. So, any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you so much for, that was very thorough. Sounds like I mean, little, little slow there. Thank you. That was really thorough. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Excited to see how this goes.
Next, we have an update of Special Olympics.
Special Olympic co-coordinators Jason Pagburn and Kendrick Paly will share Special Olympic events for the school year 22-23.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, when I was speaking with Jason, we have found out that we haven't had Special Olympics since 2020. We have just recently, because of COVID, been able to start up again. I know the principals are probably tired of all my tagging of emails, so I apologize. But I'm trying to get as many athletes as possible to start realizing that Special Olympics has started up again. Jason is in charge of K through 5, and myself, I'm doing 6 through 12 for Bangor Schools. We have already been able to have a 10-pin event on October 6th, and it was pretty exciting. I was able to get 11 high school athletes to participate, and for the first time reaching out, I thought that was good numbers. On January 24th, we were able to have candlepin bowling, and it was exciting, because we got the K-5 schools, we had 13 participants. I had aspirations program, I had seven, and then I had four participants from the multi-handicap, where we were able to provide the ramps, so they could participate as well. And all athletes have been able to receive ribbons at the event and go home very excitedly. On February 14th, we are excited, because we have winter games coming up. They had the chance of doing skiing activities or snowshoeing. Jason has been able to get 20 athletes from the K to 5 to sign up, and I have 11 from the high school. My goal is for next year to get the word out more, so maybe parents will feel more comfortable allowing their students to participate in these type of activities. This is going to be held at the Herman Mountain. We have been collaborating with head classroom teachers and staff assigned as coaches. We've been communicating back and forth. There's a good-sized packet, about 11 pages, that we have to have all athletes have signed, everything from medical forms to COVID forms to consent, and it's been a lot of paperwork back and forth. Jason and I, once we get our paperwork, we then send it to the state, and they tell us who's missing what, and then we work hard with the principals, the teachers, even social workers have stepped in and helped us get missing paperwork, because it's really tough when you have to tell an athlete, "Sorry, your paperwork wasn't provided," so we have to say, you know, that you can't join us. So, our goal, or my goal, is that by next year, I have all paperwork for all the athletes within the 6 through 12 program. So, when an event comes up, I already have all updated paperwork. And I've been working really hard with a lot of the sending schools in Bangor who can help me get that accomplished for the parents. We have been able to get qualifying scores from their previous years, because we found out that was one of the most difficult things. You need qualifying scores to be able to participate. So, thankfully, people have had good records and have saved them from the years past. We have reached out to PE teachers, who have also helped us get qualifying scores, have either set up bowling activities or snowshoeing activities for us to get them. So, it's been a lot of work from everyone, but it was really exciting, their first event. It was like, they saw friends that they haven't seen since 2020, and it was more of a social event besides just bowling, because they were so excited to see old friends. And we had one girl from another school district, who she was the only one, she recognized Bangor School students, we let her join in with us, and she sat herself right in between everyone and talked the whole entire time with them. You would have thought she was one of the Bangor School students. So, it was a great moment for all of them, and I'm really excited that we get to participate in this again. Is there any questions for Jason or I?
If I could just say thank you for your support for these athletes and these students to come out. It was a nice success story to hear from the Armsteads earlier, and it's nice that we can provide these types of opportunities for students in our schools. So, we appreciate that, and the staff has been great working with us teachers and PE teachers to, to have those athletes trained and ready for the events. Thank you.
Thank you both so much for this information. Yeah, and what I would love to see too, is something like maybe pictures and...
Yes, I took this picture on the sheet that I handed out. Someone from Special Olympics of Maine actually posted it on their website, so I was able to put it on here. One of the things I would like to look into is see who has their picture released sign, so we can take more pictures, and maybe during one of the monthly emails that we get provided to all staff, we could do something with the Special Olympics and those pictures of those athletes trying. So, that's something that I'm hoping to work on.
Oh, Member Mundell.
Yeah, thank you. It sounds wonderful. Quick question. Do you interface with the unified programs? I'm, I'm not clear on what we do in Bangor with the unified athletics programs, or is that something totally separate?
Paul. Question for Paul. Do you want to talk about that, Paul?
Unified is a separate initiative, and this is, I don't know the, which consecutive year we're in, but for several years, we've had a unified basketball program that plays a regional schedule. They have a, they have a broader and larger competitive schedule, and they've, increasing number of schools have opted for a regional, more controlled schedule that's doable for students. So, we have four games. I have one set, we do a home and home with Brewer, and there's an event at the end of the year that doubles up as sort of a regional fundraiser awareness that we do around Robin. So, we have two coaches that are taking that on, and the rosters were round out. So, the idea is the Brewer event and the Bangor event, obviously, Rams versus Witches. The rivalry's alive and well. We fill the gym, and it's a lot of fun, and it's great to see. So, we try to make it nice, home and home, and then, for a lot of the students to travel on the weekend, to have that type of alteration to how they experience school, it takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of preparation. So, two games is really about, for that, in that type of competitive environment, is, is a pretty involved endeavor. So, we're, we're really happy. We think we've right-sized it, and it's the right kind of program for, unified for Bangor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, on to 2023-2024 School Committee meeting schedule.
Yes, I've enclosed the draft of the 2023-2024 School Committee meeting schedule, so you have that in your packet.
Thank you. On to business action items. The first action item we have are the minutes for the regular meeting of January 25th, 2023.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the January 25th, 2023 Regular School Committee meeting.
Second.
All, any questions? First, any questions, comments? No? All in favor?
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Next, financial report for the reserve amount.
I'm recommending approval to put $555,700 into the reserve account to reduce the need for a tax commitment and additional budgeted funds for minor capital projects.
Can I get a motion, please?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Member Mundell.
Yeah. Superintendent Tager, could you just give us a little bit of context about what this means exactly?
I can. Jerry, do you mind coming up?
Hi there. So, this is June 2022, is my third year in close since I've been on board, and for the first two years, we actually have done the same thing. So, we look at the year-end financials and look at bigger projects that would not mesh well, so to speak, with the budget. They tend to be too large, and we try to reserve them to take that edge off, if you will. So, this year, we were looking forward to several projects and put together a schedule that's in your packet, and I can go through them if you like. But we were, the ticket, the ticket item on each one is rather large, and it would be problematic to fit into a, a normal school year budget. So, we're trying to do what we can while we have available funds to accomplish needed capital improvements that we know are going to happen down the road.
One of the examples is the Mary Snow School. We were having some brick work done, and the price is going to be a little bit more than we probably imagined. It's sort of like a rainy day fund, I guess, with funds that we have, that we can use.
So, then, so the Mary Snow's brick project was just a contractor without fees or anything extraordinary they find as they're going through the project, was $600,000, which is a big number. So, we were trying to reserve half with the 22 budget, and then come up with the other half in the current year budget, and be able to do that without having to bond further.
So, I guess my question was, are these funds coming from other programs? Where, where are the funds actually coming from?
So, you obviously vote on the budget. We go through the school year. If there are funds available at the end of the year, and I listed several categories that just didn't play out the way we had put together, I sotted off the list with ed techs. Ed techs are lately are notoriously hard to fill all the positions, so we had some unfilled, and that generates some positive numbers at the end of the year. And I'm able to do some capital projects, and we do them during the summer, but these are beyond that. So, we, we take those funds. We don't take it away from any program or any position. They're simply funds that weren't expended according to our plan that we laid out.
Okay, great. So, it's just kind of a way of smoothing out the expenses over time?
It is.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. So, we have not voted. So, all in favor?
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Next, on to personnel, and we have nominations of a teacher.
Recommending approval of the following teacher nomination for the school year 2022-2023 with a one-year probationary contract. Nathaniel Colby, K-8 Special Education Teacher, Bangor Regional Program.
Motion, please?
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
And then, we move on to second reading of policies. We have revised of extra duty.
The extra duties, yep.
Okay, I didn't see it on here, so. Okay, so we have extra duty assignments.
Thank you Chair. I'm recommending approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 2022-2023. Suzanne Whitmore, IEP Coordinator, Point 66 Vine Street School. Jenna Hope, B softball coach, William S. Cohen School. Caleb Tipton, A baseball coach, James F. Dowdy School.
Motion, please?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. On to second reading of policies. We have revised policy IGBD, Program for Multilingual Learners, and revised policy JHCE, Pedaculosis Headlice.
Recommending approval of the second reading of policies, revised policy IGBD, Program of Multilingual Learners, and revised policy JH- of multilingual learners and revised policy JHCE headlights.
Motion, please?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have introduction items. We have a first reading of a policy, revised policy ICA 2023, 2024 school calendar.
I'm recommending first, recommending first reading of the following revised policies, revised policy ICA 2023, 2024 school calendar.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Any initial comments, questions? All in favor?
Passes 5-0, thank you.
Moving on to committee updates, but first, any comments or questions from the committee? Okay, seeing none, we move on to representatives' reports. Any representatives' reports? Nothing? Nope. Member Surratt?
It's not really a report, but just an announcement that there'll be a DEIB Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow, Thursday, at 3:30.
Perfect, I'll see you there. And member Sada, do you have a student committee member update?
Just quick things, but last night and tonight, there is student ambassadors at the high school who are doing parent nights so that families can come in and learn about the high school and engage with department heads. The teachers that are staying tonight, they, they're staying pretty late, but they're very committed and they're very, they're engaging with the people who are coming in. So it's, it's really good work. And in addition, the student council is planning a winter festival to add some excitement in these months. So I think it's going to be right before February break, but students will be able to engage with some winter games and carnival-themed things, and that will be exciting. So that's all. Thank you.
A lot of gratitude and appreciation for all of our high school teachers because I know the community members are really excited about that. I saw a lot of chit-chat on social media. Okay, so no reports, correct? And then we have several informational items. We have important dates. Friday, February 10th, 2023 is our school committee members retreat from 8:30 to 12:30 at Camp Jordan. Wednesday, February 15th, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Wednesday, March 8th, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. Wednesday, March 22nd, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, council chambers. And our second retreat will be on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, 8:30 to 12:30 in Camp Jordan as well. Any final questions and/or comments from the committee? Member Mundell.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment as a follow-up to the presentation that was made a couple of weeks ago about the, the scoreboard. I, I have been thinking about this for a couple of weeks and given it some reflection. And I talked to Superintendent Tager and Chair Hassan about my concerns about this. I think when we had the presentation, I think I was in a little bit of shock to hear the price tag on the project. And although I know we're not paying for it out of our funds, and the plan is to, to raise funds for that, I am concerned about spending our staff time on an effort like that when I see other gaps in other extracurriculars that are not athletic-related. And I admit to being a bit biased here because I have one kid who's graduated, who was not really an athlete, and another kid who's not an athlete, who's currently at the school. And seeing like the robotics program, for instance, that my son is involved in, is just getting off the ground, but the, the advisor to that program is not being paid this year. And she has been putting in just an incredible, incredible amount of time and effort working with these kids. And this is, this is like a sport, robotics. So I guess my concern, you know, and also I know, you know, we have a STEM academy, we have a VPA academy. The theater program, to my, my understanding is that they didn't go to the, the Spring Dramatic Theater Festival. I'm not sure what it's called. Choir hasn't gone to Boston for a while, and they used to go to Boston. So my concern is, you know, kind of the optics of this, what it looks like to spend almost half a million dollars on a scoreboard when I think there are other programs that are equally deserving of staff effort into getting extra funding. I was, I headed up the VPA boosters program before I got on school committee, and we had parents working very hard. I think we raised about $7,000 over a year or two. And, and without any help from the department. So I would just like to see a little bit more balance. And I don't know what that would look like, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, member Mundell. And we certainly will be having some ongoing conversations because we're into the budget season now. So we'll be having a lot of commentary and good conversations about what we want to spend our money on. This is outside of the budget, but I do understand the optics that you're talking about. So I certainly will, will give this some thought and get back with you on that. I can tell you within our, our policy that it's not something that we would vote on other than we would vote on if there were sponsors to make sure that they were approved and followed within our school committee policies. But however, I do understand what you're saying about optics, and we'll, we'll think about it and get back with you. Yep.
Thank you, member Mundell. I appreciate the thoughtfulness too behind your comments. Adjournment, motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second? All right, all in favor?
Passes 5-0, thank you.